One of us represented here in each home in our city and our each family, Father. We ask you to guide us in our decisions and that we make for the citizens that have elected us. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everybody tonight. We can do a roll call. We've got Patrick is on the phone. Patrick? He's here. Pete?
I'm here.
Donald?
Here.
Mikey?
Here.
Timmy is out tonight. Is he on the phone with anybody?
No.
Okay. Angie?
Here.
And Bernie?
Present.
All right, we have a quorum. We have no public hearings. Announcements, presentations, and proclamations. We've got Christian Press from here to represent and discuss the Gateway Project and authorize advertisements. So, Christian, you're on.
Hi. Hello again, Merry Christmas. Just wanted to kind of bring y'all up to speed and recap where we are in the process for the Gateway and kind of go through some elements, some final elements of the project that we need to consider and make some decisions on, and then talk about next steps. And then, as the mayor said, get permission to advertise. So, we had a fun DOT exercise the last time we got together and really identified some priorities for this project and the money that we've been gifted from HUD. The darker items at the top were not in any particular order, kind of the ones that rose to the top of the priority list. The Tower Plaza that we've been talking about for a while, the Vendor Promenade seemed to really excite the folks about creating activity along the beachfront. Then we talked about utilizing spaces for temporary vendors or transient vendors to come in and utilize those spaces and really equipping them with possibly some shade structures that the food trucks could pull right up to, but not get in the business of renting out structures for the food trucks or for food vendors. We had some discussion about shade sail, canopies versus permanent structures, so we'll talk a little bit about that today and let you look at some options there. Parking lot lights, updating those and possibly some lighting along the promenade. And then, one-year maintenance for any landscape areas was something we wanted to incorporate into this project as well, just to let the city kind of acclimate and figure out how to take that on. And always like to have the contractor that installs it maintain it if at all possible. Then, kind of future things down the road. We wanted to accommodate the reconfiguration of the drainage outfall that's currently down there at the foot of Jeff Davis and see if that's something that could be modified in the future, so we've accommodated that. Also, at least plumbing the parking area for future RV use, if that's something the city wanted to do. We've got provisions for that. The things that kind of fell by the wayside, if you remember, and I'm sorry the font's so light. I was trying to create a hierarchy here, but wayfinding signage, something down the road, the city-owned vendor shacks like we talked about, really the Beach Boulevard improvements. Those were kind of tabled for now as we've kind of focused on the beach and the parking area. We also brought up the things to consider, the parking lot resurfacing, possibly interfacing with the county on the partnership there, on how to tackle that as a whole. As I mentioned, you start to make these improvements and it's kind of like where do you stop making these improvements without what's left? So, that's something that we're not going to be able to do as a part of this project doing the whole parking lot. We are making some improvements to the parking along the beach side itself, but that's something still that David's had some discussions about, and I think our team will continue to press to try to get that partnership done. The future drainage overlook, as I mentioned. The other thing that came up is the property owned by the city. I can't remember who exactly brought it up, maybe Alderman Brown. But the idea of that becoming an event space, we did look into that and that seems, if it's the property that I understood it to be, it's kind of utilizes overflow parking for Steve, so that may be more than we can bite off in this phase of the project, but definitely something to look at down the road. But that did, that point spurred on some thoughts for kind of gathering space in this project. So, also Keeney contacted me after one of y'all's meetings, after we met last time, about establishing an accessible path to the beachfront for wheelchair access. And so, we've incorporated a wheelway into the working plan. And then, again, just bringing up that idea of long-term maintenance and just making sure that we take those things into consideration and hopefully down the road, there's some things that can generate revenue to go towards a maintenance fund. So, we'll talk about this project elements to consider. I mentioned the event space or core space within the project and really the shade structures are the things that we want to kind of get answered today from y'all, just from a direction standpoint. So, I have two alternatives. Again, the bones of the overall plan are fairly similar. It's just looking at it aesthetically with the different types of structures and amenities on the site. These are a couple, a few of the amenities that we've planned, site furnishing-wise, that can always be added later as an alternate, but we do, as we've gone through this process, just thinking about families on the beach, these showers are critical if we're encouraging people to interface with the beach and the area along that promenade. These were kind of fun elements that we're using on another project that I thought in key areas might be a fun way to splice up the site furnishings, if that's something that y'all wanted to entertain. So, we're talking about the canopies or shade structures. This is a project we did in Pascool on their beach that introduced the canopies. The best side of that is the cost. The downside is you don't have 150 mile an hour rating on a canopy like that, so you're, in talking with our vendors, these canopies could withstand about a 90 mile an hour wind before they blow off, so.
Christian, let me ask you a question. On those like that, if we look at those sails, canopies, what is the degree of difficulty in taking them down and putting them back up if we were to choose at some point?
I mean, depending on the height, it's usually just, you know, getting a lift out there and, you know, making it yourself, you know, get up to those heights. But, I mean, the ones we have are, you know, no higher than 16 feet off the ground at max, so I don't think that would be that difficult, but I think the concern last time was y'all had some shade sails out there that are just poles now, and we wanted to kind of explore options. So, you know, the poles could withstand 150 mile an hour winds with the shade sails.
Right.
In total, we would have probably five shade structures to contend with in this current plan. So, we can kind of talk through that, but I just wanted you to be thinking about that as we go through this. The light poles, these are the proposed, the taller poles are the proposed parking lot lights and would also be replicated in the medians of Highway 90 at that point for continuity's sake, but that's what we're planning to replace the fixtures with in the islands that are in the parking lot. And then, we'd like to incorporate some more pedestrian scale lights along the promenade to just kind of activate that edge, and so those would be more pedestrian scale, like 14 to 16 feet. So, this is just kind of the bones of the plan that you've seen, and we'll have some model images to kind of show you what it looks like in 3D in a second, but I just wanted to show you with that, many trees on this, on the promenade. You saw the tower and the Sunset Plaza down here with the provisions to be able to modify the drain outfall at a later date if we wanted to. The circulation pattern is maintained the same, but the big move in this scheme is the wheelway to the beachfront. Instead of just drawing a straight line with all these curves, we really thought, and again, compounding on Alderman Brown's comment about just an event space, having something that you could go for events or really activating an area. This plaza with kind of what we're calling the Grand Plaza, formulating out into an event lawn, this contained with the retaining wall, and then having that wheelway access that goes around really ties all those circular forms together and really makes that the cornerstone piece of the whole promenade. So, that presents itself as an opportunity for larger gatherings, and it could really be a nice amenity. That's a kind of a blow up of that. And this shows you the access to, the planned access to the beach. You'd have the ramps that go down to the beach at this level and then direct step access down here, but the idea is that this continuous seat wall, these overlapping seat walls mitigate wind blown sand and help in keeping that from getting to the parking lot. So, I just go through some model views of that. This is with the shade sails kind of sprinkled along. These are the four smaller ones, about 16 by 16. That's about a 22 by 22 in the center. It shows you that lawn space along the wheelway. So, just looking at something simple like that, and we could get a little bit fancier with colors and things like that. That shows you generally the scale of that space and how that can be activated with just some greenery and having some steps down here. It shows you kind of the grade transition down to the. In this plan, we are incorporating trees into the promenade, so, you know, these areas, smaller food trucks and vendors can pull up on there if we still want to accommodate that, but there's also ample parking spaces where they could pull up and really kind of close off that space as you see it at the bottom of the screen. Long view. Nothing's changed on that. All right, so an alternative B, just kind of pushing the envelope a little bit. How do we get kids and families to come down to this beach and activate it, not 24/7, but throughout the day and throughout the seasons? We just got done with a large project in Jackson where they have invested substantially in a, in the Lefleur's Bluff site and playground, and, I mean, there's not a time, been to the site probably over a dozen times, and there's not a time when there hasn't been at least 100 kids playing all around because they have invested in a play structure out there that's pretty significant. So, with, again, with the idea of creating a space that's going to attract people, we started looking at, okay, what else could this be other than just grass? And so, a playground structure came to mind, and so we've been talking with our vendors about that. And then, we also, based on the request about the shade sails, wanted to look at some more permanent structures that could complement the tower structure. Here's kind of a zoomed in view of that, of that play area and just having a significant piece out there and possibly some ADA features around it, but the idea is that the transition would be flush from this plaza level to the riverized surface.
I have a question about your wheelway.
Yes, sir.
It goes in the circle all the way around, or they be able to access the center part of it, or just on the outer?
Yes, sir, right here. This is all flush.
I think he's talking about will it be able to access the sand?
The sand would all be accessed from all sides, yes, sir, because it's sloping with the sand.
What is the width? Because in my mind, I think I'm bogged down where if two or three people in wheelchairs are there, are they going to have to single file, go back out? I mean...
It's at least six feet wide, if not wider. And ADA ramp is about five. But as the grade transitions from the parking lot level here, it's going to get low, grayed down to the shore, and there will be a turned out footing on the shore side of the walkway. So, structure-wise, this is kind of something more in keeping with the tower that we have proposed, and so we just put some renditions of smaller pavilions. These would be like the 16 by 16 pavilions, similar to those shade sail structures that I mentioned in size, and then these would be the, this would be the 22 by 22 at the main, at the Grand Plaza entrance. So, we worked with our playground vendor to kind of propose some ideas, just really so we could associate some costs with the types of facilities and obviously don't get, you know, bogged down with colors and things like that, but if this is something that was interesting to you as a draw for families and kids down there, you know, we would consider that as an option. But this is mostly composite. There would be some steel structure to it. Our vendor said, you know, they've had these on playgrounds, on beaches, in certain conditions. They said if somebody is watching after it, these supports could last five day years, but they, you know, they have to be painted if rust starts, so, and they provide kits for that. This other one is more of a kind of a rope apparatus and less components to it, but then we have the accessible features as well that could be incorporated into it if that's something y'all want to entertain. And again, this is kind of out in left field compared to what we've been talking about, but since we're creating the space, I just wanted to throw out an idea for this as a destination. So, a few of the renderings, just to kind of go through that. Again, ignore the colors, but this kind of incorporates it into the model view. So, fairly soon, as in, you know, tonight, hopefully, we can make some decisions on which direction we want to go structure-wise and if we want to do a central space in the middle with either a lawn or a play area, or we want to go back to the drawing board on that. Budget-wise, just kind of going over where we are with that, the things that we can comfortably fit in the budget currently, the Tower Plaza, the drainage and parking improvements that I mentioned along the edge of the promenade, the Vendor Promenade and seat walls, the shade sails as a base bid option for those canopy structures, lighting in the parking area, landscape and irrigation kind of where shown in the project area, two beach showers, and then the event lawn is kind of what we have just programmed in for that along with the wheelway, beach access. The kind of additional alternatives, the five frame structures, the pavilion structures that we looked at, site furnishings such as tables and chairs and all those other amenities that we looked at earlier, playground and the one-year maintenance. And the reason I say the one-year maintenance, I think we could probably do that within our budget, but I like to do as an alternate, just kind of leave it out there if we decide we don't like the contractor, so.
On the wheelway, I don't think that just perimeter, I think it would need another designated area just by itself. I just, I don't see that working, and I don't know why, but I just, I feel like it needs to be independent in another circle and either cut down on landscaping to be able to provide that, but I don't, I just don't think that's wide enough. Because if we're, we want to be inviting and we want the people who are in wheelchairs to be able to utilize it. If you had five or six people down there trying to maneuver, and I don't, I don't see that being a...
Maybe I'm misunderstanding.
Maybe I'm not understanding the whole...
I mean, the one that y'all had designed is kind of the precedent was just a walkway that split into two.
Right, that wide out at the end, yes.
And it would just...
Yeah, we were really just matching what had previously been there.
Right, right.
Yes, sir.
I think, and I agree with you, I'd like to have one independent of the one that you showed as center, and we could maybe do something where we're looking at down the road, we could have the center pavilion with the pavilions on it, center circle with a pavilion on it, and maybe have one off to the west side or east side that's far the wheelway, the handicap facility, and then maybe one on the other side. In the future, we could add maybe some type of playground equipment that could be removed in the event that we know we have a storm coming in. Not anchored, it can be removed and even taken away to do maintenance on.
So, you saying, if I'm following you correctly, Angie, you're saying a separate where the teal blue is, a separate one altogether?
It doesn't, and I just, because I am, I'm just seeing maneuverability.
Right.
How about if we put like a 10-foot walk around it instead of six? Is that an option?
Sure.
But how much would that cost given just an individual access to one?
That's what I think, I think we need to look at some different cost analysis on doing what you're saying, Donald's saying, doing a 10-foot versus doing a standalone that could be marked handicap only.
Right.
And I think, you know, I'm going to tell you, I fought to get that to start with.
Right.
And I still like that standalone, and if you look up in the right corner of this slide where you've got that grain space, it may be a place to put a couple swings, you know, like the old type beach swings that we used to have on the beach here, and maybe tie something in there in that area.
I, here's a concern though, and just throwing it out there. Christian, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't want to put words in your mouth. You said five to 10 years life expectancy on those, on those playgrounds?
Right, that's a concern.
That's not a lot, that's not a lot of time, guys. I just...
We're all on the same page.
Yeah, I think that's a, yeah, that's a given.
Okay.
Because that's why I've already told Mikey, I whispered to him that that's a repetitive maintenance.
And that, again, that's something excluded from our budget.
Right.
Anyway, I was just showing the space and wanting to show...
No, and I mean, it's a good idea, it's just, you know...
Wonderful. It's a wonderful idea, but I'm like Angie, I, you know, I agree with it. We need a separate, you know, like you've got there, you know, with some sails out there over the end like we had, to where you can get, and there's usually, past experience of when it was used, Christian, there was one person in a wheelchair with their family with them, which was the goal when we started this, because we'd go by there and we'd see the wheelchair person up on the sidewalk and the family down at the water's edge, and they, you know, there was no way they could have family time at a distance.
Right.
And our goal was to bring them together so that they could enjoy that. I like that. I like, you know, I really like this, the center piece there. I like all aspects of that. I was like, you know, the only thing that I would like to see more of would be maybe a couple of pavilions added in. This, this has got what, one pavilion, or has this got three?
This has five.
Five, okay. All right, my bad.
I don't like the idea of the sails though.
I don't either.
I don't like the sails taking them off.
I would rather have the pavilion that matches the...
That is right there.
Yeah, those right there. Either one, I really like the one on the left.
Yeah.
Either one of them, that would be a cost factor.
Got to get through structural design on that, but it is a cost factor for sure. It's about triple.
Doesn't matter how much I like the one on the left versus the right, it comes down to what can we fund with the funding we've received.
Right, right.
One on the right is just simple and less damage.
It wasn't either or, it was, this was intended to be the one at the grand, at the Central Plaza, and then the other smaller ones were intended for the other spots.
That's good.
Just to kind of create that central destination spot right there, so.
Well, since we're running water down there and for showers, you know, the foot traffic, is there potential for a splash pad or something? No?
I mean, you start dealing with plumbing and inundation from water and...
Got it.
The whole gulf, they could go splash in.
Hey, I get it. I get it. Just asking the question.
But, but, that's, Alderman Fraser, that's exactly what I was trying to think of, is just ways to, just what's down there, concrete and sand, what can we do to activate the space? So, that did cross my mind, but once you start peeling that, it gets crazy quick.
I have one thing. I mean, we have young people right there.
Oh, absolutely.
What are your thoughts about something like this? Would that encourage y'all to go to the beach if there was something like that in Long Beach?
One on the right.
Saying yes.
All three, all of them said...
Put them on a spike.
Yeah.
They wasn't saying yes, they were saying, hmm, I can't believe that lady did that.
So, Christian, when it comes to the price, we get prices on the permanent structures versus the sails?
And Justin, with Andrew Corvus here tonight, and he's helping us on the pricing, so we can, we can get some decent numbers together on that and just evaluate where we are. It's a, and we could either, you know, if we wanted to have something in the project, like the shade sails, we could do that as a base bid with the pavilions as an add alternate, or just not do anything if we can't afford to do the structures, or just narrow down the number.
And I have one other question. If we do decide to do the sails, do they make the pole, kind of like a flag pole, you know, where you unlock and can slide, you know what I'm saying, where we could slide it down?
I've never seen one that's that, that end. You would think that would probably be, you know, on their radar, but there's a lot of...
Understand, understand.
Okay, so, working towards the permanent structures, getting some costs associated with that, and then, as far as the wheelway, going back to that discussion, I just want to make sure I'm clearly understanding.
Right, building a separate, I think you had marked it up on your...
So, but is that in lieu of doing the central space right here?
I would say yes. I like that central space, especially.
Yeah, but not the wheelway around it.
Right.
That's a keeper.
So, don't do the walkway around it?
Right.
Okay. But maybe on one of these locations do the Y.
Wheelway out, and with maybe a, instead of a sail, maybe put a pavilion a little back before it hits the Y.
Right, a permanent structure.
Cost wise.
Or back up there where it's at.
That's what we got.
Where you showing it now.
And each of these are pavilions, so they're shade pretty close by. Probably what I would do is come off one of these locations instead of getting closer to the water with another structure.
Maybe, I mean, you showed in one of the slides, the trees out there, the tall palms. Maybe you put some there around, you know, a couple on each side of it at the ends.
Okay. All right, so, going back to that, we'll keep, we'll keep, I keep pointing my iPad, but we'll keep this as is without the outer walk, right? Which that'll allow us to make this green space bigger, which would be nice. And then, and then add the wheelway, just one or two.
One Y.
Just one Y, one end.
That's my thoughts. What are y'all's thoughts?
Right.
And we could build off of that later if we need to.
Yeah.
All right, well, that is really, those answer most of my questions. Any other things related to the lighting or site furnishings or anything like that?
Like the lighting. Everything looks good there.
I think these would go at the Grand Plaza, just maybe have a half dozen on either side of that larger pavilion to kind of dress it up.
Yeah.
And then... All right, well, if anybody thinks of any other things to activate that, you know, I'm all ears, all open, but we will table the playground discussion. As far as next steps, there's one little thing that we have to do with MDOT. We are tying into one of their pipes for drainage. David, I don't know if you want to explain that any, but it's really just a couple pages of submittal for their permit review.
Yeah.
And then Hunter with Andrew Corvus helping us on the HUD approval process, so those are the two things that we have to... Uh, and then Hunter with Anderport was helping us on the, uh, the HUD approval process, so, so those are the two things that, that we have to, uh, have to do in order to, um, move forward with this project. But I would like to just request permission to, to advertise or authorization to advertise, uh, our schedule for, uh, for the projects. Uh, if, if we can get these things, some of these details buttoned up, is to advertise in, uh, mid to late January and then get bids in, in mid to late our construction early next year.
All right, y'all got any more questions or thoughts for Christian?
My only question, and we had question this to begin with, is on the tower, working with the county on the pier, because that's, has to re, they had to rebid it. And I don't, I'm not a fan of building a million dollar tower with no construction started on a pier yet, and then they tear it down or accidentally hit it or something.
Well, and, and I, let me go back to the plan. So.
Not that big one.
So the, we, we've accommodated Alderman Brown in the sidewalk, that, that's really the footprint. We've gotten these from Dax and their team. That's their tie-in point.
Okay.
Now, granted, you know, they'll, they'll have the access from over here from the beachside, uh, to, to, uh, connect to ours. But I agree, I mean, ideally, you know, we're, we're kind of working together on that.
Hopefully it'll all work together.
Hopefully so, uh, but it, it shouldn't affect the, the construction of the actual tower, tower plaza, I guess is the point of that.
All right, any more discussion thoughts? I'd entertain a motion in a second, uh, to go ahead and approve for advertisement.
Hello.
Second.
You got a motion in a second, any more discussion? Here and none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Patrick? All right, we got Patrick, got his eye there, so, uh, motion carries. Christian?
Thank you.
And if you're heading back to the east tonight, be careful on your drive.
Oh, Merry Christmas.
You too, sir.
Christmas to you too. All right, the second thing I've got is, uh, Mayor's Youth Council. I would like to recognize, we got a few of them here. And these were the, the, the young folks that Angie was picking on. That's, that's Ms. Johnson that was picking on y'all. Just want to let y'all know her name.
We have five of our 2023, 2024 Mayor's Youth Council members here. Um, once I say our names, they'll just wave to the aldermen.
Wave, where y'all at?
We have Jared Smith, Shane Walker, Seeley Gunlock, Arlene Nguyen, and Ava Smith.
Welcome. We, uh, we appreciate y'all being here. We pres- certainly appreciate your participation in the Mayor's Youth Council. I hope you have an enjoyable time and an enjoyable year. And, uh, any thoughts, uh, to the, from the board members to them?
Welcome.
Yeah, welcome and thank you.
We thank y'all for undertaking this, so really appreciate you courting me. Uh, we also appreciate you, uh, leading this effort for these, these, uh, seniors. And, uh, we thank y'all a lot for doing that and courting me, so. I think that's all I've got under announcements, presentations, and proclamations. Uh, amendments to the municipal docket, I've got, uh, three that I need to add. Uh, the first one is, uh, to revisit the sidewalk ordinance. I think we've got them, had a misunderstanding, you know, in it, so I want to add that. That will be under, uh, uh, unfinished business, that'll be number two. Uh, next, uh, blah, blah, blah. Well, we only got, I've only got two down. Uh, let's see, yeah, yeah, I've got, no, that'll be under me.
Okay.
Yeah, and then I've got, the second one I've got is, uh, bond money that we wanted to discuss going to a works, uh, setting a workshop, a workshop to discuss, uh, bond ma- bond money and uses that we have in mind for it. So I'd like a motion in a second to add those two.
Motion.
Uh, under unfinished business is two and three, and y'all help me remember this, so. You got a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Got a second, uh, any discussion on those? Here, none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries? All right, next we have, uh, approved minutes of the mayor and board of Alderman for December 5th, 2023 regular and the December 13th, 2023 special and, uh, December 13th, 2023 executive session. Motion, second discussion? You got a motion in a second to hear in discussion? Here, none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries? Next we have the Planning and Development Commission of, uh, December the 14th, 2023, a motion, second?
Motion.
Second. Discussion? Here, none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries? Next we have approved docket of claims number 121923, motion and second discussion?
Okay.
Second.
You got a motion and a second, we have any discussion? Here, none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries? Uh, next we have, uh, un- unfinished business with Robert and Susie Sapp, and we hadn't got the information back.
I, I, I talked to Joe.
Okay.
And, and I'll, uh, shed some light on what Joe, uh, met with them out there. There is actually some drainage there. Um, that would, the city would have to undertake moving some of the drainage. It's not off of the road. The drainage is not off the road, it's, uh, it's from the area, which I, I misunderstood how he was explaining that, but there is some actual drainage there and there would be a cost to the city to move that drainage. Now, Joe talked to the Saps and I don't see them here this evening, but I, I think they came to an agreement on site, but I will follow up with Joe and have a full report for us on the next.
For, you want to keep it on the agenda for the next meeting?
I think so.
Table for the next meeting?
I think so.
Okay, uh, motion, second to table this till next meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Okay.
All right, uh, any discuss- further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries? Next we go to new business. Nope.
Where we added?
Unfinished business, no?
Sidewalks.
What we just added?
Two and three, thank you. Uh, uh, the sidewalk ordinance, uh, uh, we've got some confusion here and I'd like to take a motion in a second and see if we have any discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I, I'd like to make a motion that, uh, we, from our meeting that we approved on November 21st, 2023, uh, it was notated that we put a moratorium on, uh, sidewalk variances. And my motion is that we, uh, remove or rescind that moratorium. Um, in discussing with most of the board, I think it's just some, it was an oversight on our part, cause it, I don't think that any one of us realized that's how we passed it, but being that said, we did pass it and approve the minutes, so, uh, my motion's to lift that moratorium.
Second.
Got a motion, second, any more discussion? Here, none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries? Next we, uh, got on here, bond money, uh, requesting a, us to schedule.
I'd like, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, add this to our work session on January 9th.
All right, we get a second on that?
Second.
All right, we got a second, discussion?
Just one, we have, uh, what do we have, cemetery and?
Cemetery shouldn't take long at all.
No, it should not take long at all, and then what was the other?
No, there's one other thing.
We had one other item on there.
Sidewalks, wasn't it?
No.
No?
Mm-mm.
One second.
I can't.
Yes, it was, I'm sorry, it was sidewalks, cause I was talking about the price. You're right.
Okay, so this would just be adding to that?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm so sorry, I'll be brown.
This is the brain over here, guys. Got a memory like an elephant.
These wheels are turning.
Okay, that's the, that's the things we have on there.
I'll second that motion.
We got a second, a motion, second, the schedule for, uh, uh, January the 9th. Uh, be added on to that work session. Do we have any more discussion? Here, none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries? All right, can I go to new business?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, new business, uh, number one is alarm moni- monitoring agreement for the Qualls House, uh, motion, second discussion?
Motion.
Move.
I got a motion and a second motion, and we'll take it as a second. Do we have any discussion on this? Here, none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries? Next we have a resolution, uh, Harrison County's Board of Supervisors for Mitchell Road, striping south of Pineville. Uh, entertain a motion, second?
Second.
We got a motion in a second, is there any discussion on this? Here, none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries?
Does require roll call, cause it's a resolution.
Oh, yes, a resolution, yeah, let's go resolution. Patrick? You still with us? All right, all right, Patrick voted aye. Pete?
Aye.
Donald?
Aye.
Mikey?
Aye.
Angie?
Aye.
And Pete?
Bernie.
Bernie, I'm sorry, I'm looking at Pete and, looking at Pete and saying Bernie.
Let me, let me interrupt and, and let everybody in on this, so don't feel bad.
Okay.
And, and so the, the board will have a nice laugh. While you were out, I just wanted to be known that our, our clerk had to bring a name list of every alderman to the meeting that had to sit in front of me because I would lose names. So, sir, you're not missing out on that.
Thank you. Then next time I'm gonna let Mikey call off everybody, since he's got the brain. All right, uh, it passes, the resolution passes. Uh, next we have, uh, Dennis McGraw parking on right of way, and I don't have any. Thing in here in my pocket. We got it.
Yes, this, and then, and then he just handed this out.
Okay, all right, uh, I need a motion.
And then the other.
Motion.
Motion in a second to discuss this, uh, discussion?
Motion in a second.
All right, we got a motion, a second for discussion, any discussion amongst the board?
I would just like to actually get a, our attorney to enlighten us on some of the actions here. I mean, we have a ordinance, we have a police department, we have a, uh, code office that enforces, and I just don't think it's the board's, our problem.
I, I understand what you're saying, Alderman Brown, and that was the point I was gonna make. I had an opportunity to read Mr. McGraw. I assume you're Mr. McGraw. Good, good evening, sir. Um, and, and his correspondence, which I assume the aldermen have also had a chance to look at, um, essentially says, I'm, I'm not really inconveniencing anybody and people who are doing work have said they can get around me and as long as maintenance vehicles, well, I, I understand his point about not making it, or, or not being so much of an inconvenience to everybody, but it is in violation and contrary to our ordinances, uh, that apply to rights of way all over the city. And, and although he may not be constituting, and I'm, I'm certain that he's not, a nuisance to anyone or a particular hardship or creating a danger or anything else, it, it's contrary to our ordinances and, and, uh, what, what we try to typically do with keeping our rights of way open and free to city traffic and emergency vehicles and I, I'm concerned that if, is, is, you know, letting this, this large motorhome stay there on this occasion will lead to more and more such requests in violation of our ordinance. Where do we, where do we allow it in some places and not in others? That's a bad precedent for the board to set. In my opinion.
Yeah, uh, Mr. McGraw, would you like to comment? Okay, if you'll come to the mic, sir, and state your name and your address.
Uh, Dennis McGaw, 220 Lantana Boulevard. The main reason I brought this in front of the, um, alderman is because I couldn't get a reply from anybody. I was told once that Mr. Fraser was going to get a hold of me and he did, we discussed it. I was told that the city attorney was going to get a hold of me to discuss it, never did. My question is, if we're gonna enforce this, why not, why aren't we enforcing on street parking according to City Ordinance 30.3? Which says basically that, um, let me read it, I'm sure you guys have it. Um, it shall be unlawful for any person to obstruct by fence, setting post, or do any other act that will impede the use by public, any streets, alleys, avenues, or sideways sidewalks. You take that as far as on-street parking. Right? Cause on-street parking, you're putting an avoidance to other personnel.
Well, I, 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 to answer your question, Mr. McGraw, I don't think a, a dirt road right of way is something that the city maintains and holds open for public use.
Okay.
Uh, for parking or for any other reason. It is just that, it is a dirt road right of way.
Okay.
That, that the city utilizes for city business and for emergency vehicles. We don't open it up for sidewalks and public traffic as a general rule, which is what you're referring to, I think.
That is also an access to people, to get back to that pond back there, deficient stuff.
It, it may be. I, I'm not suggesting that it's not, but, but that's not something that is parked there 24 hours a day.
So it's all right if I park on the road, but I can't park on the dirt?
I don't think I was suggesting that.
You could park your motorhome on the road, no, sir.
I wasn't suggesting that.
Is it considered a vehicle?
No, sir.
Not considered a vehicle?
No, sir.
By your definition of, of a vehicle?
We're not here to argue, but that would obstruct, that could obstruct an emergency vehicle.
I, I, I don't think, Mr. McGraw, and I think you understand clearly, you wouldn't be putting it where it was if you thought you could park it in the middle of the road. Not the middle road, on the edge of the road.
On the edge, yeah.
If you thought that was okay, you wouldn't have been putting it on right of way, I assume.
Well, I came down, talked to the building office, they said it, I couldn't park on the dirt right of way, but it wasn't a problem if I parked on the edge of North Hawthorne.
I, I, I'm not sure exactly where that is at the location, but I'll be.
Uh, it's right on the corner of, um, Lantana Boulevard. It's in the Old Town Garden area.
Have room in you?
But, Mr. McGraw, you don't have room in your, you, don't you have a driveway and a garage?
Lost there, it's, well, I can park it in there, but when I first started this, I came down and talked to the building office and the, as it's said in there, that there wasn't a problem as long as they could get around. So I was getting bad information from the city about parking stuff.
Okay, but you said you can park it on your, in your driveway now?
Well, I've had, my driveway isn't really long enough, I had to put a gate and stuff, I had to get into my backyard.
Okay.
So like I said, the only reason I brought me before the alderman was because I couldn't get anybody to return my messages. So without anybody returning my messages.
Who's the?
Well, if, if.
Tim was the council.
This is the first I heard of it. I'm, I apologize, Mr. McGraw, if something has, or McGaw, if it has been directed to the city attorney, I didn't receive it for whatever reason.
Yeah.
I, I would have been happy to explain to you.
I got the email thing from October 2nd, I think it was, from the, I think Mr. Bass was out on leave or whatever, medical. From the lady that runs the office, she said, I'll refer this to you and Mr. Fraser. I never got anything back, so.
Well, I, I did speak to you the, the one time, uh, Mr. Dennis. And, and here's how we, we went about that, and I explained to you at the time, we were having, we were having issues down the road from you where people were parking junk cars.
Yes.
Um, on the east of you, we have an issue with, uh, residents taking in that property and putting fences on it. Am I right, Mike? And, and so where we're at this situation? You know, i- if it doesn't come to our attention, I'm not saying it's okay, i- it just goes on, but when we have other neighbors complaining, the city has to enforce the ordinance across the board.
Uh, uh, I understand.
And when I spoke with you that day, and when we were gonna come to some kind of answer, that's when you said, well, I have already gotten a contact from the police department.
Yes.
Okay, at that point, that's when I, I pushed myself away from the table because it then became a legal matter.
Yeah, I, I was under the, when we talked, that you were supposed to get back with me in the next few days to see what you found out.
Well, i- i- if that, if that's the case, and I did not, I will publicly apologize to you today.
Okay.
For that.
Okay.
On my behalf, me personally, as alderman at large to you, I apologize for that.
But, but, but like I said, that's the reason why.
And that's fair.
I, I brought this up to the alderman, because I could not get an answer to my question.
Fair enough, fair enough.
All right.
Okay, that.
Basically, let me, let me add something to that. Now, you talked about the, 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 what was the.
30.3?
Easement, and it went back to the east.
I'm following you now, yes.
That people were putting the fences into. That portion of that evacuation easement is not nu- no, not needed to allow us get to where we need to go, go to get to the canal, correct? So, that, that, the city can take that portion that's there and go ahead and do an evacuation of that section, section of the easement. We need to look at down, and I'll bring it, I'll bring it to us at a later time, so let's, let's look at it.
Um, okay, yeah, I, I just, I'm, I'm trying to follow you in my head there.
Need them out in front of us.
Yes, sir.
Miss Bass, a quick question on that. The people to the east of the easement, which we're talking about, there's no fences built into the right of way. To the west, there is, because, from what I understand, people came before the board and asked permission to build them there because that part to the west was no longer considered an evacuation route, but to the east was considered to maintain access to the ponds, the power line back there, and then canal number one.
I'm not, I'm not sure.
He's saying that backwards.
All right, I think that's the question for the next time.
Yeah.
That we need to, we'll bring it forth next time, but I think we need to move on with this and then see, uh. this and then see, you know, I don't see any way around where we're at with the ordinances and the zoning that we've got right now. It's the pleasure of the board, but, you know...
Like I said, according to that 30.3, you could do on-street parking, it's blocking, even vehicles blocking technically access.
I'll be happy to take a look at it, as the mayor said, when we address it at the next meeting. But, Mr. McGaw, at this time, as you represented to the board, you have room on your own private property to keep it, and it wouldn't encumber the cities right-of-way. And it'd be my recommendation to the board that that's what you do until such time as we either abandon or vacate some area that would accommodate you.
So what you're saying is you're possibly talking about vacating that area and giving half of it to the one landlord on one side, half of it to the landlord on the other side?
I don't know that we're talking about that at all. I heard the mayor suggest that there may be some way to accommodate part of that land, but that's...
Okay.
That just came out tonight, so there's no plan at all for that right now.
Okay. But like I said, my main thing was, I didn't get any response back from anybody.
Well, I hope that's sufficient tonight, then. I apologize.
Yeah, we're leaving on Friday for vacation over Christmas, but I'll park in our back of the part of the house.
Thank you, sir.
But like I said, that's the reason why.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. All right, next we have 4th Street property, Old Fire Station location, and I've got, we have gotten some... Oh, okay. We've gotten some appraisals in, and I think that it would be in our best interest if each of you would come by independently, or we could go in executive session to discuss the prices and...
Mr. Mayor, so I guess, real quick, my, I don't know if you need a motion to discuss before we go any further, but I guess, isn't the law, if we're looking at it, don't we have to take the average of the appraisals we got and take no less than that minimum, correct?
Um...
So if we had, if we had, just for argument's sake, if we had three appraisals, one at 100, one at 95, and one at 90, the average would be 95, and we could take no less than the average of the three, correct?
I don't think you could take less than the average of that.
Correct, correct. So I think it's the average. I just, I guess that's where I'm looking for clarification.
I think all the aldermen need to look at the appraisals that we've got.
The appraisals, yes, sir.
Or we could email them numbers off the appraisals to each of the aldermen and then show the middle of them.
The alderman did receive copies.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. That's why I'm saying...
So what is our next step we want to do? We're gonna advertise it to take sealed bids?
I think we need to come up with our base, and then we need to advertise. I'll make that motion to move it along.
To advertise?
To come up with a base amongst the board.
See how exactly what it is.
And have our legal counsel bless that and make sure we're doing the right thing, and then advertise for sealed bids.
Okay. Counsel, you all right with that?
Yes, sir.
I want to make sure we file on this properly.
That's fine.
Do it. All right, we have a second?
Angie.
Angie. Okay, she turned.
I'll forward to you right now.
I couldn't hear. All right, we got a motion, a second. Any more discussion on that? Here, none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed motion carries? Next, we have a special event out for Long Beach Chamber Commerce to touch a truck, and then motion, a second, discussion?
Second.
All right, is any discussion on this? Here, none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed motion carries? Next, we have Ms. Sean Barlow sidewalk ordinance. Sean, you want to come forward? Are you okay with what we've done?
I'm okay with it. Look, you mean, I was the first one to have to apply.
Well, look, we apologize, I think myself and all the aldermen had not felt like we had done it, but somehow we've got it confused, and it went into the minutes, so we've taken care of it tonight.
Thank you.
You okay? All right. Thank you, Sean.
Bring ice cream next time, Sean.
Okay, next, we have department business, and I have several items on here I'd like to discuss. You know, y'all have seen the new Jeff Davis extension that we've moved forward with, and it's been curved and paved out. It's a really nice-looking street, and we were, several of us around City Hall, and myself, Courtney, and a few of the aldermen that I've run across, I've mentioned to, I would like to request that we, in honor of the Qualls House being called Greenville by Mr. Qualls back in the 1800s, that we rename that section of North Jeff Davis. It will eliminate a lot of confusion, I think, of, people always think of railroad tracks as being North Jeff Davis. They don't realize that that road is over there, and it goes through now, it's a complete road. That we rename that section of that road Greenville in honor of that. We got a motion, we have a second?
Second, with just a minimum amount of discussion, Mr. Mayor, two things. 911 has to be involved in the renaming and postal service, of course, so...
Say that again.
911.
Right, yeah.
We have to go to E-911, and then postal service would happen.
And we could, right now, there's one house on that road that would affect. So I'll tend to go see the postmaster tomorrow and have Griff, if it's voted for, to work, since he's a 911 commissioner, that he could take the move this far with us through 911 to get that single home, so...
That was my same thing. He...
Okay.
He agreed with me to it.
So will it be Greenville Lane? Is that what we're...
Greenville Lane.
Vale.
Greenville.
V-A.
Vale.
V-A. I think it's two L's, but I can't remember.
I have to go look at this.
One L? Okay, it's Greenville, V-A-L-E, Lane. So, what happened to Casper? Oh, there he is.
I think we got ice.
You gotta turn it on.
I ain't gonna ice, it's ice on here.
Too hot upstairs, too cold down there. Throw another log on, buddy. All right, we've got a motion, a second.
Hold my hand, daddy.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed motion carries? Thank y'all. Next, we, I have something, and I've passed this out, this drawing here, and I don't know if any of y'all have been over there and kind of walked down the new Greenville Lane and seen behind Chuck Ryan's, they still a few of his old cars back there, but he wants to remove all those old cars and take a section of what he has in the back and fence that off to be able to put a structure similar to this where it looks like the front of the Qualls House, and put vacant offices in there that he could fill with maybe a beauty salon, a law office, there's any number of things he could put in there. And he had, before, had talked about putting a little storage unit in there, which would have been very small and unattractive right there against our home. Since I've talked to him, he is very much excited about adding this. It would take a piece of blighted property that we'd consider blighted in there, and it opens up for new development. It's gonna be, you know, it would be very attractive, it would match, you know, the Qualls House, and it would just bring this in. The problem we've got is we've already approved the fence in our North Jeff Davis extension that goes along right off the west side of that curb and by, in some sections, by a minimum foot, and then it opens up to a lot bigger footage away from that curb. And in talking to Chuck, to Chuck, I'm tripping on myself, and discussing this with Chuck, he would be willing, and I don't know if this is gonna be a legal question for counsel here, but he is willing to pay. The poles are, the posts, the fence posts are already in the ground where they're gonna go. He is willing to pay for a new post to put in on his property line and us put our fence on his post, and the fence, you know, it's already covered. So anything additional we do, we'd go back to that. That would be in an effort to bring this to us, which is tax-based for us to do that. And I don't know, he said he would pay for the survey, and talking to our, David with Overstreet, our engineering firm, he feels like that the fence that it's on, the property's on right now is maybe, you know, it could be anywhere from six to eight to 10 foot to the east of Chuck's property line there. So he would have to get a current survey of his property line where that fence could be put on his, which will allow us to get development there. It's not gonna be a mini warehouse, a small, very small mini warehouse is what he'll be able to get as it sits right now where our fence would be, very limited. If we open it up and he has road access there, you know, it's public lands, he could have the road access, he builds a new parking lot on the south end of his current property, and I told him, all we could do is the fence, if we get legal approval, is to do the fence from the north end to the south end that's been currently approved. Any additional fencing he would need to continue on and turn back to the west and then back to the south would be on him completely, and he's agreed with that. Counsel?
Do I understand, Mayor, he's suggesting that we move it to the actual property line according to a survey, or to somewhere onto his property?
Onto his property.
The only way that the city could do that is if they had an agreement with the gentleman that he was going to abandon the property or allow the city to have the property by gift or something of that nature. We can't build a fence two or three feet, whatever it is, onto his property, and next year he changes his mind, and we're in court encroaching on this property. If he wants to deed us that property, we'd be happy to take it.
Right, and that's what's gonna be the follow-up question to you. Could he give us an easement that allows us to put a fence up there?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay, you know, and then that would be a permanent easement.
Such that easements are permanent. You can always come back and attempt to vacate them, but...
Right, and then we could vacate it later if we need to, to allow him, if there's any repairs in 10 years from now, that it's him making those repairs and not us.
Could do it by easement.
Okay, so this is something that you could draw up where we're protecting the city...
Investment in the fence and whatnot.
Investment in development there.
Yes.
Okay, y'all, have y'all followed what I'm saying?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
All right, we've got a motion to allow us to do that, and there's a lot of things that's gonna have to fall in place for us to be able to do that based on his survey and such, and then a commitment letter from here, from him to us, that gives us that fence easement.
Second, with discussion, I have a question. You said the poles are already set?
As they were currently supposed to be.
Okay, so are we gonna have to pay to have them taken up, or?
He said it's his.
Okay, I got you. I must miss, I didn't hear you. Okay, that's fine. Second.
Mine, Ben. All right, any more questions? I want to make sure that we all understand what we're trying to do. This is opening up an opportunity for a good development we'll tie in for the rest of that north end of Greenville Lane. So, all right, all those in favor?
This is very attractive looking, very attractive.
When you consider, if you haven't rode by, and you go by and you look at the building as it is now, they're finishing up, the outside painting, and the colors are wonderful. These were the exact same colors that Mr. Qualls had put on in the 1800s, because it was scraped back down to those colors, and it's the exact same thing. If anybody wants to complain about the paint colors, go see Mr. Qualls at the cemetery. All right, any further questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed motion carries? All right, the next thing I have is, let me find it here, y'all. The Makers Mead, ABC has sent us a letter here, and I need, I hope y'all have read this.
Yes, sir.
It's from Mike Gunlock, and I just need a motion, a second discussion on this.
Motion.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion, a second. If y'all've got any questions, Mike is here, he could very adequately answer any questions that we might have.
Have we made contact?
We have not. We just received that letter. It was written 6th, we received it the 12th and responded the 13th, or the 13th and 14th. We were right at the end, and I contacted ABC, and he asked me to send the letter explaining to him what I was telling about where it's zoned in a RO, where you can't manufacture or do any of that, and he responded back, I think he contacted Keeney the next day or Monday about that, and said they need a stronger letter from the governing body instead of me.
If y'all want to oppose him having license.
Well, if it's not zoned for it, I think we are opposed to it.
I mean, we have to...
We need a stronger letter than what I'm sending.
So...
Under y'all's authority.
That's a motion to authorize Keeney or City Hall to send a stronger letter to the Department of Revenue?
Yep.
I'll second that.
Could we...
That we oppose.
Would it not be prudent for us to have the city attorney on our behalf send the letter?
We could.
Yeah.
This is something that is time-sensitive. It has to be done soon because they're starting their investigation for this.
Start, we're stuck.
Right, we have to get that to them.
Dave, yield to you. Would you prefer coming from City Hall?
Sure, I'll do it.
Before Christmas.
Man, he's all over you today.
Yes, Ebenezer.
Yeah.
I'll make an amended motion, amended motion that we have the city attorney...
Thank you.
Send a disapproval letter on our behalf.
That's my motion.
That's what my motion. You got a second from Pete. We have any further discussion?
Wow.
Here, none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed motion carries? Next, I have my final one, is the Qualls House insurance. We've been discussing today with our insurance company, and they've come back. Donald, and I know you could probably tell me, it got a 27% because it's sprinkled, and it has an alarm system on it, and our rates are lower than...
So because of taking those extra precautions, along with updating any kind of building codes, we got a 27% instead of what could be out there of 50 to 60.
Fifty, yeah, above 50%. So we did really good with that. It's gonna add on to our system. We've got to pick it up on December 31st. We'll pick up the insurance on the facility, and they will prorate it out, and then he will, I think it was, don't hold me to this, I don't have it in front of me, $24, $2700 a month?
That sounds about right. Or the annual.
Annual, annual.
I'm saying.
Annual, excuse me.
Hello?
All right, got a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Here, none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed motion carries? I am finally through. Thank you, Patrick. Next, on the personnel, and library, we'll take these together. We've got three step increases for the police department, and library has one step increase. I'll take a motion, a second discussion.
Motion.
Got a motion, a second. Do we have any discussion? Here, none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed motion carries? Next, we've got city clerk revenue expense report for November 2023, a motion, a second?
Motion.
Second, motion, a second. Any discussion on this? Here, none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed motion carries? Next, we have authorize advertisement depository, motion, a second?
Second.
All right, motion, a second. This is bookkeeping, guys, so discussion.
Discussion. As far as the depository, that's, does that include our daily activities? I mean...
All of our funds, yes.
Okay. Are we advertising it outside of the city as well, or?
It's a public bid, so...
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, because of what happened with the fees at budget time, I just want to remind the board of that, you know, where we were, what was it, like $156,000 in fees that we had assumed. So just kind of keep that in mind, but it all depends on who bids on it as well.
And also be aware, we used to bid this every two years, and state statute says now we can do it every four.
Are you recommending that we go to four?
Four years would give us a better cost right now, but it may not in two years.
I guess that's the thing. I...
Where's your limbo gonna be?
Hey, well, you deal with this on a daily basis, so...
I don't know if we can go to four, can we?
State statute says you can go to four.
You can.
By state statute.
Do that.
Boards.
Right.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Here, none, all those in favor, aye? Here or none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries? Next, we have budget amendment, FY twenty-four, Public Works, Mike, now let me get a motion, a second?
Motion.
Second. All right, do y'all have any questions for Mike? Hey, no discussion with Mike, any, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries? Next, we have fire department chief, you got anything?
No, sir.
Thank you, y'all, have a Merry Christmas then, aye?
Yeah.
Police department chief?
Just wanted to thank the Board of Aldermen that personally pitched in and supplied the entertainment for the city Christmas party this past Friday night. I think we had right at a hundred employees show up, so.
Good.
Thank y'all.
That's good, I hated I wasn't able to make it, but I was under the, the illness, so, anyway, thank you, chief, appreciate you always, Janine and the rest of y'all, you always do a great job pulling it together, chief, all the departments, y'all, y'all do a wonderful job, so. Next, we have engineering, North Lane Avenue Pump Station Improvement Bid Schedule, motion, second discussion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Here or none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries? Next, we have M, M dot Form, LPA one hundred, Pineville Road Sidewalk Phase Three, and this is Phase Three goes from five points to Jeff Davis.
Don't move.
Railroad.
Railroad.
To railroad. To railroad, not Jeff Davis, to railroad, yes. We've got a motion for approval, we have a second?
Second with discussion.
Discussion.
On our match money, have we determined whether we can use the internet sales tax money for that? Mikey, you and I were talking about this.
I don't know, y'all would have to find that out, but I.
It's just, it's just throwing it out there, just to kind of keep that in mind, it's nothing that we have to agree on tonight, but.
We can, but.
Something I just think we need to look at.
Why we can't, but we also talked about using bond money to, to do these matches too.
That's why we, I put that on there for the work session.
Bond work session, see if we want to pull all these matches together that we got coming up, and look what we can apply for.
So I'm just jumping the gun.
No, I, no, I don't think you jumped at the gun, maybe we can, now we do have, after the first of the year, our asphalt coming up.
January the sixth or ninth is when we should be getting.
Well, I mean, no, the, the overlay for the roads that we got to, me and David discussed it.
Right, but, but.
And then we can.
Payment, we should receive our next payment.
Correct, that's what I'm saying, so we might be able to, yes.
Might be on the list to get it done.
Okay.
All right, oh.
No other discussion.
Yeah, I, I'm good, thank you.
All right, any, no more discussion, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries? Next, we have Public Works, Mike?
Thank you.
You're good, thank you. Rec, Bob?
We're good.
The lights are still looking good, y'all done, can't say enough how good that looks.
Thank you.
Building off a zoning issue Pineville Road, Mike, we're going to motion a second for discussion.
Motion.
Second.
Mike, what does, I don't have anything in my packet about this.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Just, I didn't say anything about it.
Got a pretty picture on it.
I just need some discuss, some direction on this, on what to do. If you look at the map, where the new Bear Point subdivision was developed, the north end of that subdivision is zone C two, well, now it's all residential. So is it, when we did the subdivision, did it fall into residential and the C two went away, or do we need to do a zone map change to get that C two out of there and make it all R one? And that, it's in the top north, northeast corner of that, and there's residential houses there now.
If I may ask, when it was originally plotted, we didn't discover that?
This is Hancock.
I did not.
I don't. Did not.
Yeah, it doesn't just fall away, it has, we have to do a, have to do a map amendment.
Yeah, and I talked to Bill Hessel the other night at the meeting, he says they need to direct you.
Is he building homes in there right now?
Yes.
Those homes will be put in there? I think it's a no-brainer, we go, we go to residential on that section and leave the rest.
Yeah, but, but would you do, need to do a map amendment, it doesn't just change because we decided to build on it.
Okay.
So we need to, we need to, we need to address this in our ordinance, so I don't know how, how we're going to move forward with this. Bill Hessel told me to ask the Board to see what they wanted to do.
I would make a motion that we had either advise you, or does it go back to the planning commission to do a map change?
I, I recommend that we remand it back to the planning commission to do a proposed ordinance change to reflect a change of that particular area from commercial to residential.
That's my motion.
And send it to us.
Second. Well said, Mikey.
Thank you, thank you.
There's one on the north side of Pineville Road, those two subdivisions, Denzmore, and I'm not sure the other one.
The other private one?
Oak Haven.
Yes.
If you look at that map, they're colored for C two, they need to be colored for R one, so it's just a color on the map. If you read the meets and bounds, that is R one, it was just colored wrong.
It's corrected there.
Here's just, here's another case where we're taking C two, I'm not saying, we're, we're losing C two into the future, well behast, past our administrations, and, you know, I'm, I'm telling y'all, I might have a, maybe, it's got homes on it already?
Well, the, the north part was never zoned C two, it just has a color on the map that shows it as C two, but it never was zoned it according to meets and bounds. Yes, sir.
Okay.
So you ought to be able to take care of that, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
You take care of that, and again, you know, there's homes going there, and we're losing more C two that should be used for.
Well, that, but that property has set for, I mean, I can, do you remember anything being built on it, all that property?
Fires when we ran rabbit dogs.
Yeah, and paintball, but that's about it, so.
Yeah, it's, yeah. I have no, you know, no way, any more discussion on this? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries? All right, next, we have Emma in municipal court, we got to appoint a public defender, Matthew Slogan, if we have a motion, a second discussion?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I've had the pleasure of speaking to this gentleman, comes from a very strong family, and I highly recommend him.
Okay, thank you. Emma, recommendation, so, and I, I would like to also thank Mr. Purvis for, for his service to us, you know, and I wish him well in his new endeavor, and still his willingness still to come in and fill in for us, which is a good thing, so, Mr. John B. Purvis, I appreciate you. Any more discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries?